Okay, six forty-two, I will call this meeting to order, it's October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. And I'm going to draw a call first, Terry Warner, can she hear? Terry? Okay, Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Laura Sanchez Fowler.
Here.
Mike McLeod.
Here.
Sam Houston.
Here.
Okay, you're all nice and pleasurable.
I'm here.
Okay, Terry.
Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone unmuted.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Finally, the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And please stand for the end. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we are just so grateful to be here and to to serve this community and to serve you. Lord God, we just ask for your guidance in all the decisions that we make and all the rewards that we are giving. Lord God, we just also pray for rain. And we just thank you for the gift of salvation, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll move on to Catholic comments, Mary Beth.
Yes, ma'am. The Mary Beth class is starting yesterday. There are six participants, more are expected next week. We meet from nine to eleven every Wednesday in Brookstore. And it's not two hours of exercise, a lot of it was discussion, then you go about why people fall and what happened if you quit moving. And the main thing is to keep people up moving and exercising. And the area agency of the county. And Fall Family Festival is this weekend, Saturday from ten to one. There's a bounce house, a face painting, plenty more, a bunch of kids. And this is going to be in a green space between Willets and Brooklyn Cafe. There's also a farmer's market, and they start at nine thirty. And they should have live music, I think. Anyway, ours is paid out in St. David's. And then on Saturday, November sixteenth, is World Art Day. And this is art education for children, there's music, arts, dance, several other art activities. And I don't have the time yet. And this is paid for by the same children, and that's for arts education. Then Friday, December sixth, is downtown freelining. And we have Santa Claus, you can never really get any of the fire department. The library will have letters to Santa and other activities in the library. And then Brookstore will have vendors, food, and stuff just set up inside. Then the library has another grant from Save the Children for Early Childhood Education. And children will learn their colors, numbers, letters, so on, skills that they need when they start kindergarten. And I've spoken with some fellow teachers, and I said they could tell the kid who's had all this early childhood education versus those that have not, when they enter kindergarten. And this is every Thursday from eleven to twelve is a sort of childhood. And also, we're really proud of our food bank, we sit down in this company, Caldwell County Food Bank. Also, a lot of community members are dropping out, and soon I saw a lady took some lees out, and then she put in some canned goods yesterday, so I thought that was really cool. But anyway, okay, it's free, you can even plan, but you know if anyone gets anything, and we're gonna have to explain it. Very topic. Okay, other events going now, okay, every Friday from eleven to twelve is coffee conversation. And that's the Blenheim St. David's grant. Book Club is the first Friday of the month, and that's from two to three. The Crackers Corner is next Friday, next week, from two to three, and then a bump over Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from twelve to two. And the library service agreement, that y'all agreed at the first meeting. I'll send him that, the library board meeting on October the tenth. And the board didn't agree with that, though, five board members, five different premiums. So we're at a table until our next meeting in November. But thank you, though, for a couple of hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in the same budget. But anyway, after the board meeting, one of the board members approached me and asked if there are other entities in Martinville that form a service for the city. And the example was, they were like, you're a real ass, I can't even. And they have to provide all the detailed information that y'all have, well. And also, we're a nonprofit, but there's also another nonprofit that performs a service for the city. And I've not seen anything that they have to vote on, contract, anything, not leave program of health. So I just, just wondered, just putting that out. But anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so this wire they've asked us to put in a utility bill might go out tomorrow. Even though it's a little bit like, right?
Those go out tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, those are still good.
Yeah, the other side, yeah. And your permit will be ready in the morning. I'm waiting on the signature from the police chief. Okay, we're gonna, I've been invited Sean Charles from E S D five to come and give an update. So.
All right. Um, may the council, um, so, actually, we just had our meeting last night, like I said, and it went from six to ten thirty last night. Um, I gave a actual slideshow presentation to a couple other municipality entities, commissioners, all that kind of stuff two weeks ago, and there's not one correct slide left on it. So I'm giving you the update of what's happening as of today, because every single day, something else has happened. Um, all of the D S H S licensing stuff, that's the big, that's the main thing, that's, that will hold up everything until it's done. Um, that's the license to practice in the, in the county. Um, that has been submitted, everything was checked over in the first, made it past the first level of scrutiny. Um, with no issues, that's done. Once we get that, we can apply for the D E A license, and that takes about two weeks. Um, let's see, there is a new ambulance that is done. Um, it will probably get picked up at the first week of December or so, maybe the last week of November. It's kind of stuck in a limbo state because the city of Lockhart bought it. There has to be an asset transfer agreement that doesn't exist yet, and then the E S D has to purchase it. So all of the assets from the city of Looming, everything is done with Looming. Station lease, which that one's gonna be leased, the purchase, we're actually buying that station at, at the hospital in Looming. Uh, Lockhart's lease agreements have been completed, the stations are gonna stay the same. We're trying to build out a small station, substation up towards Litton Springs, that general direction. And we're probably gonna hit up either Maxwell or Martin Dale, some of what Martin Dale fired, Maxwell fired pretty damn quick as well, we have a temporary slot until we find another, another home nearby. Um, but yeah, everything is, it's happening really, really fast right now, the last six months, it's kind of like newborn. They didn't know what to do, kind of newborn baby horse, squirting, you know, squirting everywhere, but it is going really fast now. Uh, last night also, uh, I did get appointed as officially on a piece of paper as the chief, uh, Richard Slaughter is the assistant chief. And what else would you? I think that's about it, that's not four hour meetings worth, but that's, that's the high points.
I'm excited.
But I'm definitely answering questions, yeah.
Here in Martindale, a lot of times we wait for an ambulance, someone to find. And so I'm, I'm really excited about this, I think it's gonna be more fair as far as taxing the citizens of Caldwell County. And I, I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Better service.
Part of the, the, the only other time I've been here was when last November. I don't remember, it was part of the presentation, but like, the entire county as a whole, for us, is twenty-seven percent of the county does not have any insurance, that's no Medicare, no Medicaid, no nothing, zero. No coverage at all. The rest of the county is forty-two percent self-paid, which becomes a little right out of your purse. So us taking it, control of it, and having it here versus other entities coming in, or really, my main goal is, is to meet, uh, basically a time requirement, it's a short way to put it, you know, we should be able to forecast and say, we're gonna make ninety percent of the calls in nine minutes or less. I should be able to do that. I've been here for almost two years, we're actually currently fully staffed for the first time in five years. And we're also one hundred percent paramedic staff. But we still only have two ambulances and two stations, and we can only get to some of the places in a decent amount of time, so. Fixing that is priority.
When you start collecting taxes too, you'll be able to buy more ambulances.
I already ordered two more.
Oh.
Yep. Yeah, the ambulance market these days is about twenty months to order and actually touch it, and be able to drive it home. So as soon as we, actually, we, we ended up borrowing three hundred K for operational expenses to get things off the ground, get things moving. Um, that's helped tremendously, even though we've only spent like five thousand bucks, but licensing costs money, all this other stuff, honestly. Um, but since E S D exists, and the tax roll was already done for the year, I could send in a letter of intent and say, hey, I wanna buy nine hundred thousand dollars worth of ambulance, and it said, absolutely, here you go. Sign here, press hard, and we'll see you in eighteen months, so, yeah, perfect. Lot of stuff is, it is moving fast. And the goal is still, at this point, to, unless something catastrophic happens, uh, to be live January one. And it'll all be E S D five, and there will not be Lockhart and Looming, and that's, we're all smashing it around.
So here in Martindale, if we had to have an ambulance, a lot of times there's accidents on Highway eighty, especially nineteen eighty-four and Highway eighty, the police teams take this. And, um, where would you take someone?
So.
You would ask them where they wanna go, or?
You try to, um, so there's a few rules in Texas administrative code, I can ask them if they are, they meet the definition of a patient, if somebody thought that that was reasonable, so they obviously meet that. Um, and do they meet capacity, or like a capacity checklist, or are they with it enough to answer the questions that I'm asking, if they're not, I'm not gonna, I don't mean it me, but I'm not gonna ask them, they obviously would be more than what F B is gonna be able to provide, so to go to a bigger hospital. Um, even with that, if it is a traumatic injury or something like that, I'm not, we wouldn't go to San Marcos, because that's not a trauma center at all. But they don't do that there. Uh, Hayes is the closest trauma center. Um, both of those hospitals are, uh, cardiac cath labs, so something like that, whichever one's closer, even if it's three minutes. I'm gonna ask you, and if you say, I wanna go to Hayes, but I'm gonna drive right past San Marcos, I gotta do a really good job of justifying that, because in Texas administrative code, it says I'm supposed to go to the closest appropriate facility, that's.
When you say hey, that's Satan?
Yes, sir, Satan Cloud, yes, sir. See Medical Center Hayes.
So, look, one, two, and the Hayes Hospital, fine.
Yep. And then when they, like, when we do a chart and we sync it or whatever, if there ever is an audit, I've only been through one in twenty-six years, so I'm not, I wouldn't expect it, but if, when we do the chart and we say that I took them to Hayes after I drove right past San Marcos, that all that is geo-verified, anybody? Soon as I hit sync, it goes into Google Maps, and it represents it's permanently part of the charter. So, all the places it needs to go.
So the county, it looks like the county rehopped on the air flight. Um, what do you call that, that they're gonna provide for the citizens of Caldwell County?
Yes, Sam.
Do you know how that works?
I do, I spent fifteen years on that helicopter.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, I think in twenty nineteen, if I remember correctly, don't quote me on that, there was a bill called the No Surprise Bill Act. So that primarily, at the moment, applies to air ambulance providers. When I pick somebody up in a helicopter, when I leave that scene, it doesn't matter where I'm flying to, that's gonna cost this much, and it's usually an insane amount, it costs about fifteen hundred dollars an hour of time to run that helicopter, plus my salary, her salary, pilot's side, blah, blah, blah. So fifty thousand dollars is an average bill. Back in the day, uh, prior to Acreman Act, you get that bill in the mail, and they said, you owe me fifty thousand bucks if your insurance, I mean, I ain't paying that. No way, that's too much money, we'll give you five thousand. So the insurance will pay the five thousand, and you get a forty-five thousand dollar bill, and some of them are pretty shady, and will put lees on your houses and stuff like that, those, most of those don't exist in this area anymore. So the No Surprise Billing Act came out. So if the insurance says, y'all didn't do anything in that flight, we're gonna pay you eight thousand dollars, and that's it. That puts you, now they can't send you a bill anymore. It's against the law for that helicopter company to send you the balance bill. What they can do, though, to get around that, is create site plans, where they come to your, say, if you're your county or whatever, and say, hey, we'll, we'll offer you this membership for however much it costs, and you don't have to pay the bill, you don't have to delay them. But they can charge you a deductible, they, they're the ones that decide whether you're gonna have a deductible or not for the service. So some of them do, some of them don't, like, there's no ambulance service that charges a deductible. That's, that's a contract between you and your insurance, but really, it, it helps people, that twenty-seven percent that has zero, absolutely no Medicare, no Medicaid, it helps that person, because they don't have any coverage at all, so they will give it. Of course, people get eyesill, that's the way our healthcare is designed. Um, but that will cover that twenty-seven percent, and the rest of it is paperwork. So it's a good benefit for.
That's a question.
Yeah.
Uh, would that be somebody who has a pretty catastrophic injury, being an helicopter? Or is it got heavy traffic on their side?
Both, yes, the answer is yes. Uh, typically, for the helicopters, like, for a time sensitive issue like stroke, um, a heart attack, or some type of life-threatening trauma. These days, in the ambulance, like, when January one hits, y'all are gonna see a whole bunch of stuff all over everything, the E S D five is carrying whole blood. We do everything, the E S D five, that the helicopter can do, but they can get from point A to point B like this, and I gotta go like this. So, yeah, um, like, if it's, if it's, again, you, you try to manage care versus how much that patient's gonna get billed for. Um, if it's something that we can do, we don't fly them, if it's something that absolutely has to go somewhere like a eye trauma, or missing fingers, or something like that, like Level One Trauma Center, that needs to go to downtown Austin, so we fly them, because that, that's, you can fly right over Level Two to get to the Level One, that's legal. You can always justify driving by the lesser care to get tired, or flying by.
So Caldwell County has made arrangements with the helicopter company. Um, I guess I need to get all that information to my citizens here. I know it's been in the paper and stuff, but.
Yeah, basically, if you have a Caldwell County address, or you are in, well, it covers around Caldwell County, but for higher purposes of this, if you have a Caldwell County address, they expect you to be able to call them and tell them, hey, I'm part of the Caldwell County cares, that carriage plan, to not get a bill, but most likely, you're not gonna remember that, because you needed a helicopter.
Right, yes.
So you're gonna get a bill and say, hey, I'm part of that plan, so then you can call them, and they will give it to you.
Okay. Caldwell County cares, and.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
You mentioned, uh, some kind of collaboration with the volunteer fire department of Martindale or, or Maxwell. Would that be to store the ambulance in the facilities, or to have a substation?
Substation, uh, an actual staffed ambulance, um, talking with Chief Germer and Chief Alex both. They, both of the stations, the, what they had planned for in the past was to be able to do that, like the new station, I don't know where.
On eighty, yeah.
Yeah. Um, that's, I think, part of the design of that station was to be able to do that. Uh, but now, that would be a temporary spot, so the fire department can grow, because now we have an E S D, we can build around, right next to it, wherever, something like that.
You would, you would not sublease within this building? Like E S D, the, the, E S D three's gonna build a fire station here on eighty.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Like, you would not house within that building?
Yes.
You could, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because they have a, I know they have a, a bay already set up for that.
Yeah, there's always.
Where, they, well, Sunday.
Well, the, it's plain, no, I know it's, I've seen the plan, it's there. There is a bay dedicated for that.
It takes a special plug, it's a, it's a really weird plug, but, I mean, uh, I do that part. Yeah. That's the plan, spread it out, because having, I wanna say, we've got three hundred and twenty-three square miles in our current district, and forty-eight thousand people in it-ish.
Yeah.
With two ambulances, and the other district has a little bit less mileage, with nine thousand people in two ambulances. Wow. This, it's a little different. So, no, we're fixing that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate you coming out and educating us. And we're excited about this new service, because it, sometimes it seems like we're in Never Never Land, since we're so close to San Marcos.
Yeah.
And I know I was with, uh, at the native furniture store when it was over there, and the guy cut off his fingers, and they waited forty-five minutes, and finally, they said, we're gonna get you to the hospital. And they just, the boss grabbed him and put him in the car, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, I'm expecting that it's gonna get way better, so.
It is definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
She's.
Okay, I'm gonna change the schedule, we're gonna go to four point one, real quick. And you're welcome to say, but I know you're busy, and so you won't make, make us feel funny if you decide to leave. Um, so four point one, discussing distraction, possible action, or to appoint and confirm. Um, Diana. Um, I always say your name on.
Where?
Gavara. Gavara Garcia.
Close enough.
Uh, okay. Um, as the municipal city clerk, she's currently the interim, and she has done a fabulous job. As we've seen tonight, as she's had to struggle with all of these technical problems. And so, um, I would like to hear a motion to appoint her as the municipal court.
Laura, this is a good chance, good time for you.
I don't know the words, I will try again. For my second. Um, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Diana Lopala as the municipal clerk of this new month.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay. Terry, do I have to do a roll call while we're on this one? Uh-uh. Okay, Terry, none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And I heard Terry, she said aye. So there aren't any opposed, and the motion carries. So now, we get to do the oath of office, and I'm going to swear in or judge that we voted for last night.
Council, thank you for the consideration, I didn't know y'all had a full, um, agenda, I wouldn't have asked. And for disclosure, my mother is at Santa Crista, and she has a mask, overtaking terms. So, so I just came from there, I'm going back, so thank y'all very much for the consideration. I didn't know y'all had a full agenda, I wouldn't even ask.
I know, I was gonna talk to you. There.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, but I think we do do a roll call. I wonder, oh, yeah, we do. Okay, so we have a motion, and then a second, now can you have you vote?
Yes, aye.
And Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then Mike, how do you? And Laura made the motion, okay, you second it.
She still has to say it, although everyone has.
Laura, how? Aye. Terry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, so the motion carries. So I'm gonna swear in the judge, and then I'm gonna let the judge swear in Diana.
There you go. You brought my rose, your first game, first game.
So if you can stand and might want to walk closer to get in the camera.
I can miss.
Right, sorry, the whole, I am your W cable.
I am your W cable.
Do swear solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of municipal judge.
Of the office of municipal judge.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the great state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of these United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
This great state, so help me God.
And then back in your own side, you have. It is, it's going to be yours.
Very much.
And then, uh, I'd like this for you, this might be down here.
I do.
Yes. Oh, for her, yes.
Yeah.
All right, you ready?
No.
All right, let's get you, you're quite small, so make sure there's a camera there.
Oh, yeah. You check the.
Now I get to chop the meat. Think I might be able to get it. You raise your hand for me, please. Diana, Luisa, cueva, garza?
I am Luisa, you have a garza.
You solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
The city clerk of the city of Martinville.
Of the city clerk of the city of Martinville.
Of the great state of Texas.
Of the great state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of these United States.
Of these United States.
And of this great state.
And of this great state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Maybe, like, she wants to take a picture of you holding this with, you know.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, both of the other, here. Thank you. Get your, oh, the other paper.
No, you're yours.
Thank y'all very much. Congratulations.
One more question. Yeah.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Sure, no, thank you, I'll send them to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Keith, I know you're back here. Thank you.
No, this is, uh, this is Diana. She's working. She's not only sporting it, but she has to do the work. Okay, so now we'll go back up to the reports. And I have a few things to just talk about. The burn ban is still on. Um, and I get reports every day from the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Uh, there's fires in this county, there were hay bales, as you saw in the newspaper. So just be very, very careful with out, maybe outdoors, if you are, and we're not, we're not supposed to burn.
I was saying, we actually had a, the power go out, fire got there, Matthew got there with a truck with eight, it was less than ten minutes. Did it catch on, did it catch on fire? No, it didn't, I walked out, didn't catch on fire, but the, we had, uh, three constables showed up, and then, and then they showed up right after. So, and then, uh, the electric company didn't show up for another thirty to forty minutes. So it just went out for about two and a half hours. Yeah, my daughter saw this part of the, of the processing.
That's why we have a burned, uh, on the city property, we've had all those branches burned. First, we realized we had to get a permit from T C U, because we're a municipal, so we got that, but now we're waiting. Uh, but Daniel Jimenez is gonna burn all of them, someday, whenever it rains. Okay, and then she noticed we've got all these boxes from the shed. So we had twenty-four of these padded chairs that we didn't quite want to get rid of yet. But, uh, as you know, we don't have that much room, so it's easier to use the folding chairs. But in order to put the padded chairs in the shed, we had to, uh, figure out which boxes need to go to, to be shredded. And I wanted to let the city council know, if you wanna look at any of these boxes, we'll have them all listed by uh, next city council, so that we can make an official list. There, there's about fifty, we've still got a few that we're going through, from those election boxes over, those are all really, uh, ready to go. So feel free to wander, if you wanna take a look. Um, early voting starts next Monday, I think it is the twenty-first. And we worked for years to get it a early voting station here in Martindale. And so I really wanna encourage people to use it because if we don't, then they'll take it already from us because it does cost quite a bit. Um, the Caldwell County elections page, that's all you have to do is type in Caldwell County elections. And they have a lot of wonderful information. Uh, here in Martindale, though, they'll be eight to five all next week. Uh, Saturday even, eight to five on the twenty-sixth. Monday through Wednesday. Oh, Sunday, eight, nine, three. And then Monday through Wednesday, eight to five again. And Thursday and Friday, seven AM to six PM. And then of course, election.
And that's at Three Rivers, our location.
Mm-hmm. Our location. And so during early voting, you can vote at any of these locations. On election day, you have to vote in your precinct. But in early voting, if you happen to be in Lockhart, you could go vote in Lockhart. Or if a Lockhart person was driving to San Marcos and they wanted to stop in Martindale, vote they could.
I had a question about that because someone on Facebook that lives in Colton, Guadalupe County, but I guess from the ETJ of Martindale asked where they would vote.
They'd have to call Guadalupe.
Guadalupe County.
Yeah.
Because I know it would either be in Staples. Who who knows, Centrus. Okay.
They usually have one in Staples.
Staples, okay.
Okay, we have um two workshops that are coming up. One next Monday. Um, and we want, we did this for two reasons. So we hired Javier Mylan.
Yes.
Me, my mom.
Me, my mom.
I still said, sorry. Anyway, he's been fantastic. And so one of the things that Jared's having working on is annexations procedures because it's something we've been talking about, especially councilmen and the cloud. How to bring in these neighboring uh neighborhoods. So he's going, he's done a lot of research. He's got a presentation to give. And so we thought he goes to school Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, so he can't come to city council meetings this semester. So on Monday, we thought everybody get to meet him and then you'd get to see some of his work. So.
Mayor, we probably need to tell, I'll tell the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
We need to tell them. Or I'll I'll spread the word.
Yeah, so this will be at ten AM on Monday.
Oh, ten AM in the morning.
Yeah, it's gonna be during the day because that's when Jared will be here and you'll be here.
Gotcha.
Jared's in his school, so working around everybody's schedules is a little bit tricky.
I'll pass the word on.
I had a, I wanted to ask something about that because we had a meeting the other night about the um pocket list station and how we were gonna do maintenance or we could do an upgrade. And so would we annex these neighborhoods? I I know we investigated the cost of taking these neigh neighborhoods off of Septic and putting them on sewer lines, but would that be a way to upgrade our uh sewer eventually or whatever, perhaps? Uh, if we annex in more homes, more more rooftops.
Yeah, eventually.
To trigger that, again, to qualify for grants to if it's come in and the capacitors' capacity issue, then then qualify for grants of to upgrade the system. But right now we don't.
Because we don't have any rooftops in the future.
We don't, yeah, we're we're not over capacity.
Yes.
If we could, you know.
So. Okay, and then the other workshop is uh Thursday night, next Thursday night, a week from tonight. And it's the Parks Advisory Board and the River Advisory Board. And we want to discuss how to use the eight acres of parkland, phase two and phase three. Uh, so that's what we'll be publishing that agenda on Monday. And then I just wanted to let you know, um the Charm Workshop will be November fourteenth in last, the first one was in Lululeah. This one's gonna be here in Martindale. And Carlton Carl hat is donating the space for us to meet him. And it will be from four to seven PM. Um, and there there will be refreshments. That's what uh the uh people had told us. So this is to to help us also develop the master what do they call that? The master program, master plan of our city. Um, okay, so are there any questions on any of that? They have done. I'm gonna email this to the council in the morning. They have done an analysis that I got yesterday. Martindale City and Regional Subdivision Stormwater Standard Report. And so I will email that in the morning to all the council members to look at. And then we just didn't have enough information to get it into the utility bill. We'll go onto the city account. And he's got exciting news, too.
Okay. Exciting account. That's not something you wanna have. Couple not known.
Okay, so uh we'll start off with the with the bank balances here as of Monday. Uh, you see the general fund, straight road, court, police, utility, uh utility deposits, community development. Uh, and uh one thing, you see all that money in community development. We have uh fronted some money for a grant uh that we have gotten the money back now, so I'll be able to put that back in our investment fund. Um, got y'all to approve the transfers the other day. So you see, we have about hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars at First Lockhart Bank. Our emergency fund is up to two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then our Public Funds Investment Act savings, you see all those various uh breakdowns there, total of four hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, long-term capital fund, fifty-eight thousand three thirty-one. So if you go down a little further, you know, that's at eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in cash uh as of this Monday. And two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars uh due to comptroller. And uh, any question on those balances?
Yeah, I had a question about the park mobile. Uh, we have certain uh like accounts, tax-exempt accounts with like Lowe's or Tractor Supply and that just refers to the tax number, but you had mentioned perhaps that the since we're gonna be using the restricted fund for park expenses, that you would need to set up a separate checking account.
Yes, I was thinking about that the other day. Um, I I didn't come prepared to answer that, but yeah, because right now, if you go back to the previous report, Diana, um, the money is uh in this investment act account. See that forty-six thousand dollars plus about another six thousand the other day? Uh, is in that reserve and we can't write checks on that account. So I'm either gonna have to uh scroll up higher.
Wait, what what about the investment something? And how how does that relate to the park mobile money?
That that's where it's deposited right now.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And uh.
Because you don't have that separate bank accounts for the park.
Right, but they interest on that money.
I see.
And uh, I guess that's true. Um, so you go down a little further and you see the various accounts that we have for streets and um, you're gonna need to go down.
There you go.
There you go. Straight road. Port restricted, police restricted. I guess we're gonna need to put, make another parks restricted uh so that we can run money through there to pay the bills because that's a special revenue, you know, designated kind of account.
So you'll just have a small amount of money.
Yeah, yeah, transfer. I don't know. We'll we'll figure out how to how to do it, but ten thousand dollars at a time or something uh to keep the the contractor over there paying uh.
The water, the garbage, the electric.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, we'll we'll need to work on that. I haven't had to pay any bills yet, but I'm sure they're gonna be here shortly.
But in but in regards to those tax-exempt accounts at our vendors, that is not anything that needs to be changed or is affected by the uh park mobile uh money's now paying for these for future items to be purchased. That would just be a check.
No change.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those are by entity, tax ID number. That's not changing.
Okay. Okay.
Our next report should be the budget report on the general fund. Um, let's scroll that down a little bit. So this is uh October through September of twenty twenty-four, so the entire fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, assume we brought in three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of uh ad valorem taxes, uh so which is uh better than expected. Oops.
Sorry, who else?
There we go. Um, sales tax, you see we brought in eighty-two, seven, ninety-two, just under plan. By a few thousand dollars, franchise fees are greater uh than expected. Uh, so you see total taxes, five twenty-one, two twenty-five versus a plan of five eleven, nine thirty-three. License and permits were also greater than uh than expected at thirty-one, five forty-six. Interest was also greater than expected at forty-three, nine thirty-nine. And uh if you go on down a little bit of grant money, I think that one forty-eight is like uh opioid money that we that we got. Uh, that didn't have to go into a special designated place. See other little fees that we collected. Municipal court revenue, the fifty-two thousand, you also have to add another thirty-three thousand that's over in the special revenue uh fund, so eighty-five thousand versus one twenty-five. So that's the only one that was uh below plan. Total income, six sixty-three versus six ninety. That six sixty-three, you need to add that uh that other thirty-three thousand that's over in the special revenue fund to compare to budget. So a little bit under plan, but well, I guess really not.
No, just a smidge.
Yeah, it'll be a smidge over line. Okay, the expenses, if you wanna kind of track down through those. Don't have any questions. This is still the um issue of our budget was not set up in as much detail as this report is, so it's hard to compare to budget as you look at the expenses, but if you wanna kind of roll down through them, Diana, and uh see if there's any questions on on any of those.
On that engineering one that was forty thousand dollars, I mean, that could be for things that the grants would reimburse us for.
Should not be, but.
Um, those are just direct expenses then that we paid the.
It's not reimbursed up above by like developers or it's that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's kind of, no, we we did take a hit for um, the sidewalk grant. And then we did take a hit for the analysis of the wa- wastlers. But they stopped that. Remember, it was gonna be four. They stopped.
Yeah.
So it was still. It was still.
Still had to pay them.
Yeah, still centering that one up. Still. It was still real much.
Okay.
I know.
Show it.
Vehicle maintenance, we just did a bunch of stuff on the car AC and all that. Is that reflected?
I don't think so. I think that's a coming year.
Okay.
Is is the Ford back on the road?
Yeah, yeah, I just saw it when I was coming in.
It's been up, it's been for a whole week or so.
Yeah.
Oh, so this covers the end of uh the fiscal year of twenty-four.
Yeah.
I I see September.
Okay, here we go. I'm ready. I'm ready. Stop. You stop. Okay, stop, 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 stop. This and and let's hold my pen down so I don't throw it. Okay, so the parks went over. We discussed that when it went over, we're taking that out of the the reserved account.
Where, which line item are you talking about?
Fifty-one dash X X X X. Those are expenses. So we spent twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents. The budget was only twenty, so we went over five thousand dollars. If we go over, we're supposed to take it out of the park mobile.
Okay.
Yes, Sam.
Uh.
Be quiet.
Oh, because we hadn't paid anything out of the park mobile.
We haven't taken anything. Roll was once went over budget and then we go to the park mobile. So. We'll be evaluating that in order to do an adjustment at some point.
So, yeah, I can do one of these transfers. All right, keep going, Diana. So it's the bottom there, uh sixty thousand dollars. Oops, you passed it anyway. Sixty, go up a little higher.
It's still not, yeah. It's not gonna be, we know it's not right. Yeah, we know it's not right.
Yes. Okay, we'll keep going down. Next will be the utility fund. But when you take the nets of all these, you'll see that we're
Yeah.
ahead of at least we're at a break even, put it that way. This right here is the utility fund. Um, going down with like a total revenue in the utility fund, three thirty-one versus three forty-five was planned. And why were we so low?
That's because we didn't buy it in the.
No, no, this is this is revenue, this is revenue.
Uh, keep going.
We'll get to that one, hold on.
You get to the bottom line on this one and you'll see we took a positive by about twenty-five thousand.
Well, we took some money out of grants to ma- maintain those water. I'd like to know how much you took out of grants. Give us a true question. Of what we did for maintenance, true maintenance. That whether we were profitable or not profitable.
Really?
What do you mean?
The utility fund in historically, my understanding is always lost money.
It usually doesn't cash flow wise. It does after depreciation.
It's always been.
So it's to the positive twenty-three thousand, seven fifty um for last year.
But.
There's a a cash balance.
But we but we did do some expenses that were expensed out of a grant. So this is not in the final. I know it was in close to that number, too. It was real money.
I need to look at it.
Yeah, down down the road, we won't have a great one.
That's correct. Not that that's 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 my point.
All right, keep going, Diana. Next, special revenue, see health tax, a little bit under, sales tax a little bit under.
Yeah, parking revenue.
Yeah, parking is good.
So parking revenue, that was the same number on the report last month, twenty-one that. So I would assume that there should be one more about. Right.
Uh, yeah, there was another deposit that came this week.
I know, but the 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 report you gave us last month, this is actually the month, so. Yes, I think there's a or something missing. It should be.
Okay.
Well, isn't it like staggered a month? Because even though you make it for September, they don't pay us till.
Well, but there still should be one every month.
It's just, yeah, there's one every month. Yeah, it's always in the readers.
What what do we have? Do we have the information? Do you remember what the what we had?
There's like sixty six hundred dollars, I think.
For one month.
Last month would have been higher.
Yeah, it was a lot.
Those, that would have been for Sep- September.
All right, going down.
No, it did for August, this is through September, so the August revenue received in September.
So this one.
Um, did you ever figure out what that true, let's see prevention fund funds could be paid for?
No, I uh I don't, I don't know that.
Sonia had asked a few times about.
When she asked me about. Uh, another one on there and I got her the information. Maybe it was that.
It was that one.
Yeah, I gave her the the printout on it, on what it could be spent on, but I don't really recall. Okay, going down. Special revenue. Then the plan could possibly go up about half the parking revenue in the wrong line. Okay, going down to the next one, uh would be grants. For the year and. We brought in. Hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. In the last year. Going down, I said that we put out a hundred and seventy eight. So. Is that for us for points?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, the other thing um I wanted to show you is uh just today, we got the uh. The new system for the utility payments implemented. And it is now, we now have a uh. Integrated voice response system for making telephone payments twenty four hours a day. We also have a new citizen portal where payments can be made and your past history can be looked up. And so if you click pay now, uh select utilities, you're able to. Look up your account. We're gonna pick on the mayor. Do you remember her account number?
Yes.
And translate means it it is in Spanish as well? Okay.
And uh if you wanna write it down, the uh, but this link goes to, it's on the website, you see it up there, although it's it's actually shorter than it's. Martindale TX P N T dot com. So here you see is a history. On the mayor's water or utility bill.
The history for water.
So we weren't able to see this history before, now this is available online. Back to March is when we started using this system. Since then. What does that do if you click on the number over there on account number, is that doing anything?
Or you?
Yeah.
Just gives you details.
Anyway, our bills, you know, they don't have usage on them, perhaps and all of that, like we see in San Marcos, because. Our bills don't vary, you know, the trash is the same every month, the um. Wastewater component is only updated once a year, based on your usage uh in the winter months. But uh anyway, so this, this online portal is something we've been trying to to do for. Months. And you can uh, if you go back to that first page, you're able to um. Yeah, login. To that login page, so you're able to create your own account, password, all of that, and it can automatically. It can store your payment information, can automatically uh process your payment monthly if you'd like. Um, we're gonna continue to offer the ACH debit option, because this does still come with a three percent fee. The credit card does, but the ACH continues to be no charge. And um.
Does it get that option when you log into this?
The ACH knows it's a separate system. We still have to handle that. Manually kind of through the bank. It's not really manually, it's part of this system, it sends them a file and I have to upload it and. Donna balances it, makes sure it's okay. Yeah, so um.
What's ACH again?
Um, automated clearinghouse.
And ask what this is.
No, this is credit cards.
Oh.
So the ACH is connected to your bank?
Instead of your credit.
Like I I gave money, and there's over a hundred people who have done this.
Oh, bank rep, bank rep.
Yeah.
And um, you know, we're just continuing to make um efficiencies in this this department. Uh, here at the city.
Poisonous fish to me.
Yeah, uh you'll notice when you call in now to the city hall, and you're gonna have a little pre-recorded uh thing before you. Uh, can make it an option, because it gives you the option to make a payment.
And give us some feedback on that message.
Yeah.
We started out with, you know, we need nine one one, call nine.
Yeah, it's like one, if you wanna make a payment, two, if you want to. Talk to the uh municipal for, three, if you wanna talk to the police department. Four, if you wanna talk for zero, if you wanna talk to the the. The front clerk. So um. But yeah. This is. Utility system is all, no working right now. So. We've got uh. You know, our our. Our head count at the utility desk is, you know, less now, because of all of these things and um.
Who's asking Donna, she can keep track, we can keep track of the the house, counting the people walking in.
So.
I don't think it's that many.
Wait, that's a, that's what I have. And um.
And then it's six percent if they name with it for it, right?
For.
Four percent for payments and three percent for utility.
So four percent, if you go back to that first page, and there's an option to pay a permit. As well, I think it's at the first one before that, there you go, and there's gonna be a button for port too. But uh we don't have that one uh.
Gotta get their data linked up yet.
So I have to take that button off until we get it. Get it fixed, and we could put twenty buttons on there, we saw some, you know, towns where they. Collect for street festivals and, you know, you name it, uh there's all kinds of uh capabilities.
So Hadi, our new assistant uh city administrator. Is looking at different uh programs for permits. Where somebody's wondering, do I need a fence permit? And then they go online and fill everything out, no, a person would still look at all that, but. Um, that way you get all of their information and what they're planning on doing. And then you could go back after everything's entered and. Uh, once everything's approved, then it can be paid online too.
All right, there's progress, progress.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we're ready for the wastewater report.
This is the report for the month of September. We had a noise with the lift station at that time. I spoke to them, I guess, anyway. At the ponds, we uh researched the airport. We also collected the monthly B O D sample, like the P A C, the P H. You check the P S that fails. And I reported all the the internal readings, calculated the internal flows. And uh we checked all the wiring, control panels, and the controls. And uh we had, we had like about three and a half feet of free board. In the ponds. We also irrigated about thirty thousand three hundred gallons.
What does that mean, three and a half feet of free water?
That's a much of water level you have in your pond.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have a a two feet of free for this. They don't want the the T C keep, wants to have more. That's that's status, not permit. You gotta maintain that level too. Yeah, exactly. That's a good question. Cause I don't know, don't know that.
So that load, that durable for load for prop dishes.
Yeah, I mean, but now, I mean, it's, you gotta get ready for the for the weather, it's getting rain, rain season, so. Gotta, gotta do a little bit of water management, but so. So you'll be okay going into the water.
Uh, so like with the, how it drains out, I mean, you irrigate the ponds a little bit, but none of it. Drains out, out of the pipes, I mean, you spray it all out on. But if it evaporates and gets really low, if there's no rain, then it just gets lower and lower if you, but then you don't. Use the uh sprayers as much then.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta deep that up. Reason will get with you. Cause you wanna have some water that pour in there for. For treatment. You don't have.
Like anticipating the weather.
Yeah, exactly. And uh depends on that first part of the report.
So the football. And get a new pump, which we're doing.
Yeah.
Does that have to also be fixed?
You know, I read that, I was reading that uh that paper you sent this morning. That included that pump over for that other pump that's next up.
Okay.
So all we need is put a pump in that pump over to get somebody to replace it.
Now, is that all in the pocket? It's all in the pocket. Okay.
Yeah, cause we were trying to figure out the other night, when we did the improvements, when you sort of took parts from one to the other. You did that in May, or like.
Yeah, it was in May when we had that issue with that pump. So that's what saved us at that time. We had to take, we had to do that pump over to the other side of it.
And we were trying to figure out how much that costs.
It didn't cost anything.
It didn't cost anything.
There's labor.
Yeah, they tore, they tore it down, they tore the pump down, uh it was uh. And uh I found out yesterday that my repulsor stash from. I think it's made in the nineteen.
Oh, we got, got you on.
Yeah, it was, that pump was put in there, that was part of my grant. And I really don't think it costs anything.
That's good, that's a good run.
Yeah.
And that was almost when May, that was here.
And then, so when it clogged this most recent time with the rags or the towels, it couldn't have come. From that side of the highway because of the grinder pump, so there's no telling where. Anywhere in the system.
Yeah, but then everything going to that.
We may have to put something else on them, well, a newsletter then that reminds them to not flush things down and.
Well, you know, all that we talked about, putting in a a screen device in there. To degrade, uh, for water coming into the lift station, or against.
So how 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 big of a thing, how big of an item was in there, was it a towel?
No, it was, it wasn't really, there was no obstruction in the pump this time, it just wore out.
Okay.
Yeah, it just went out. You you take it out, I I took it out of the, we took it out of the, just rubbing against the belt and the work. So uh the guy, I talked to the guy yesterday, he said it may be. Said that uh that could be a spare pump. I mean, you already have your position, I don't think.
Well, I mean, the what original, the quote we had gotten was for eleven thousand some dollars per pair.
That's correct.
But a new one is fifteen.
You're getting close to the.
That's what we were discussing, so. Boogie's model, yeah.
And then he said we could store it at the man's, or at the apartments, there's a shed.
Yeah, we got no shit there.
Cause that was the other question, where where would we store it?
We always store our pumps in there, so.
Okay.
How secure is that? It has a lot of money to be in.
Well, it's got, it's got a fence and a, then you got the building.
How how is that comfortable?
A horn of them, just.
I like to, maybe our time walk.
And uh. And I called the guy the day, he's supposed to shut it up tomorrow. It's supposed to be here probably twenty two or thirty, they missed it. And they're gonna bring it down here.
Is it U S thing? China.
There'd be a little bit of the day on the home, you know, you know how that works.
Have you had a chance to go and look again at that manhole uh between. Southeast River Road and the Rocket Lift Station, the one where the broken uh sewer lines are there on Southeast Road. And filling in through that manhole.
We haven't uh, I haven't got that quote on that, of that tunnel that we see, do that one. I called the day, he's.
He said what?
He's dragging a seat with it, getting getting a book to his.
That puts in several thousand gallons of extra water through the treatment plant from the rainwater.
Yeah, we get a lot of infiltration, et cetera.
Yeah, can't we just calk them?
We got a ton of firsts. You gotta go through that, through that section of sewer line.
But you said a lot of the lines were crushed, say, on the Lily Cockring property. Yeah. When they tore those homes down, and they didn't do sufficient uh care, when, and that's where getting the infiltration.
Yeah, the second those, you had that time to take care of that, you had everybody pull those off of. The lines and the.
They're all broken in the city.
The only way you're gonna be able to do that, you have to run a camera through that chain. And then locate each step. They they plug it, dig down to the pipe, plug it.
But do we need to leave that line there at all?
That's gonna be up to the city, if they wanna invest some powers down there, I mean.
Well, that's all, that's, most of that is city land now.
Yeah, it's all flood paid others.
All flood fund.
It seems like you could just go to a certain plane and just fly it.
Yeah, that's what we were discussing, you know, maybe propose that to the city with a map and say, you know, this is where.
Yeah.
We should stop it. And that would, oh, you know, prevent infiltration of the.
Yeah.
The water, cause you're, we know you're, we've got infiltration based on these numbers, you know it's water.
When it rains, it really gets bad.
Yeah, I I've looked at it, I can tell every day a rain just by.
If you get into a high level situation, you gotta wait to pump, it pumps about twenty four hours.
Well, that's another reason we're wearing out the pump, that we're pumping, we're pumping too much. Well, can we suggest that we focus on that or provide some solutions to the town hall, so we can?
Yeah, the the only thing I can do is that, there's a, there's a manhole, but down the corner of the, that stop sign. That we gotta excavate. If you plug it all three ways, so the water won't go back into the station.
Because you're also getting infiltration from down Southeast Road, from Cemetery Road, where all those homes were there, so it isn't just on. The nineteen seventy nine of it, it's all the way down because of all those homes that were there, that were part of the buyout along Cemetery Road. There was maybe ten or twelve homes there, a lot of homes.
Yeah, but the choke point is what he's referring to.
At the manhole.
Yeah, so, so closing off the manhole.
Okay.
Would would do that.
Yes.
So can we get a price for that?
We can.
Please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And uh we irrigated like uh, all that thirty thousand three hundred gallons September. And we averaged about sixty three hundred gallons. And the maximum blow was at twenty four thousand, we averaged about fifteen thousand one hundred fifty gallons. And they repeat with a zero point zero nine two. And they repeat with the zero point zero nine two. And we go into the airport talking, we talked about one million one hundred ninety three thousand eight hundred eighty four gallons. And then we averaged about thirty nine thousand seven hundred ninety six gallons. The maximum flow was a hundred forty thousand twenty nine gallons, then the minimum flow was sixteen thousand fifty. That expression, or that's why the mayor to make a timeline of all the repairs and. We did run out of that, out of that product, too.
Do you think that's worse?
It's, it's, it's good for the. It's not a permanent fix, but at some point it gets kind of like that for me, it's to take a side out of it.
Really like a little bag.
Yeah, can you get us a quote for that also? What's the cost of, do you sludge them?
Oh, do you, like, dredge them and stuff?
She got dredged.
Dredge.
It's kind of expensive.
Well, I imagine that will be. Grand, is there a grand for that?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get that regional plan.
Yeah. But that's, that's what you need, right? At some point we're probably gonna need.
Did you, did you say that typically with that evaporation pond system, typically every ten years?
You're supposed to.
It's never been removed. But that chemical does some.
It makes it go up some, yeah.
Is it worth the money? Your opinion?
It's like I said, it's like I said, it's, it's not a good, it's a good application practice, but it's not a permanent, permanent applications.
I know, but is it worth the, is it, is it?
I think, yeah, it's good to, you all kind of know.
Thanks, alright. I'm through, ask me questions.
Well, I'll, I'll ask one, one more than in, in that grant we have, we did get a grant for the fence around the evaporative ponds. And it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the grant. Uh, to fence in all of that, and so. We may have to, I don't know if we could relook at that or, or see where we could spend the money elsewhere or as we, we've already signed, already.
That's what, that's what it's compensating, straight.
Oh, we can't make any adjustments to it.
Well, I sent the preliminary report a few weeks back.
So you'd have to read the grant to see what the scope of uh available services. The case is that no maintenance, there's no maintenance. Has to be improvements.
Yeah, it, it was like a one mile long fence or something, it was.
Really nice to be able to. Exactly for other, other.
I agree.
As a fence, I would ask things.
Well, but the fence isn't important, we were getting cattle in there and.
Yeah.
Off-roading.
Yeah, roading.
Didn't know I could do that. Okay. Okay.
What's the next one?
Thank you.
If y'all wanna, if y'all wanna know a very about the permit, you know, as far as that rule, the T C Q, you took your permit. And it talks when you're reaching a certain, a certain level of water in there.
Well, if you fix the manhole problem and we're reducing, that helps, that helps the capacity, well.
Yeah.
Cause we're, we're, we're going over because we're letting water in.
That could be. That's part of the problem.
Yeah, I mean, not right this month, obviously.
Would that be considered a maintenance?
Plugging that manhole, oh, that'd be an upgrade. That's a, that's, that's, I don't know if that's a question for.
That's amazing.
That's good, that's a little creative, like.
Yeah, we just renewed our, our permit, right?
Yeah, there was a check for like twelve hundred fifty dollars last week. That's something different, I think, that the, the permit for the rule. I was seeing Jared the other day. See when it, when it was inspired, it's to you personally. And we need to find that out.
Oh, I thought that was the report you sent.
That's another fee on the T C Q charges.
Well, what was the re- report that you had me sign uh two weeks ago?
That was the soil sample report for the, for the year.
Soil sample report?
Yeah, and I gotta send that to the state every. That's when we analyze all the dirt down there. The wastewater plant. We take it from the lab, then we get the, the, all the exalts and we put all the. These all to the. It's like an annual, uh, it's like an annual expense.
Yeah, because the permit itself is like.
Oh, that's something.
Eight thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, we gotta find out when they expire, so we don't want, we don't want that shit expire, we get in trouble. As Jerry's like.
Who do we pay that to?
T C.
T C.
T C Q.
Oh, how, that permit's long for a long time, right?
Well, I knew it was due this year.
I think it's like ten years.
Ten years, that's fine.
Well, I, and I knew it was due this year. I thought that's what.
As you can find out, because. I think I got a copy of the permit about five dollars. Y'all should have a copy and you're.
I would have thought they would have sent this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, they won't tell you anything.
They won't tell you anything.
Because you know what, when Jared hired me back, well, he, he had me a bunch of, he had me a bunch of mail from the T C Q. And uh. And one almost, had said that it had expired, the permit, so I had to go through a lot of hoops to. To get them.
For ours, they kind of expire?
Yes.
So now what do we have to do?
No, not, not right now.
Oh, in the past? But you haven't gotten any?
No. I know, look at the project, I copy of the print, it tells you the date, that what time it started.
Gosh, I get the mail every day. We should have it on file.
It's supposed to have it here.
We should have it on file, we're gonna check.
Yeah, it's the first, it's the first page of, of that permit.
Though two south.
It'll give you the date, but it won't say shooting. Yeah, you don't want that, you don't want that P to start.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, babe.
Are there any other questions?
We'll try to get that fixed, I guess, before we get into that rainy season.
Today that pump going out is wake up home.
Yeah.
We need to be more diligent with maintenance.
That gets tired of harping upon, but, you know, we, we uh. We went all the way to the pandemic, I started during the pandemic, a couple of years. We got lucky.
Yeah.
They're gonna get a hurricane due.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, is it ever gonna rain again? I hope so.
Yes, I mean, I've seen.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, babe. Sorry about the.
Chief of Police.
Come on, chief. How's that Ford running?
How's the Ford running? Running. Really bad.
It renews every five years, the permit, I'm gonna finish, sorry, the permit. Last time we renewed it was March the thirtieth of twenty twenty. Was the renewal, so that means the paperwork has to be in this year, probably. It's the last time.
So it's for five years?
Yeah, well, we lost it in two thousand and something and we had, we had a new one. Two thousand eleven, two thousand fifteen, twenty twenty. These are the renewals.
So now this year, we haven't got anything.
Well, it sounds like it's twenty twenty five, that would be in this calendar year.
I thought it was this year, but I guess it was this year we need to think about it.
Yeah. Since we're slow.
Yes, okay, thank you, okay, sorry.
Okay. Good evening.
We're panicking.
So the police report from September. Is, we had a hundred and six citations, it's a hundred and six tickets, forty two of which were warning, sixty four citations. The majority of those were for speeding again, as usual. Uh, we had one from the city ordinance, uh, the use of exhaust brake. Uh. Councilmember of the governor asked us to step, go out there onto eighty early, real early, because he was hearing them. We went out there and sat there for weeks and found that. Really, there was more taking off of the trucks versus the, they're using the exhaust brakes. So it was more of the trucks taking off and you can hear their exhaust, other than just their engines versus the exhaust brakes. Uh. That was pretty much it on the citations, nothing.
What about, is anybody go through trucks?
Yeah.
Nobody's broken. And you think it's helping that sign, you think they're paying attention to it? You're okay?
I mean, yeah, I think so, I mean, it's hard to tell that, we haven't had any uh serious road erosion, fair coil run, all that sort of road, so nothing's gonna tear, not anything up. Cause you really couldn't tell, so we don't have nothing there to. So.
I understand any trucks go down there.
No, it, it, it makes a difference when they can see the signs, they know, not go that way.
Could, could you give me an example of maintained financial responsibility?
No insurance.
Um, okay.
The. That's, that's the formal term for, for maintain financial responsibility, is the formal term for no insurance.
Okay.
So failure to control speed, how is that different from speeding?
Cause it resulted in a crash.
Ah.
Their speed resulted in a crash.
Um, in the morning, I mean, do you have more, I, I hear a lot of traffic in the morning on the highway. Uh, it's usually by six or six thirty because so many people are probably commuting or. Or whatever, but do you find the, are there big pockets of increased traffic? I mean, is there a time and two in the uh morning when people say leave San Marcos? Or do you find it's busiest in the morning? That's, that's when I hear the most ones.
It's busy all day long now, eighty, a lot of that. I mean, traffic is getting tough, it's harder. To run traffic out there now, it's not safe to make a U-turn on somebody when they're speeding. You'll try to turn out after someone and there's cars coming, going north and you're trying to turn back north against them coming from the south side. So it's just busy on eighty all around now.
So if someone passes in that turn lane, what's that called, improper passing or?
Yeah, disregard, no passing zone. Number two.
And then what about where eighty is two lanes and then it goes to one and people wait till the very end? Or they go right there through the stoplight and then it pack its sack, then they move over? I know you've given some tickets for that.
Yes, I haven't given it in a while, that's uh, that is actually, there's not even known, none of this, it's uh. Disregard traffic control device. No, we don't think we gave any this past.
It seems to be catching on better now with the increased signage and, and such.
Yeah, that's what it's called, disregard traffic control.
Thank you.
Then move over to our control activities. Knock on wood, we had only one animal call in September, usually we get a bunch of those, but we only had one. We had five city ordinance contacts. Thirty three parks checked, thirty eight calls for service, two incident reports, a six assist counting or EMS. Uh, thirty four public assist or citizen contacts. Uh. Nine traffic hazard, traffic control, three crash reports and no office reports. Which is good.
What's an offense?
Yeah, a crime. A reportable crime. We had, we had some stuff that we took information aboard on, so that's what we wrote your incident reports, but uh. A reportable crime to neither, it's gonna be an office report.
And you mentioned, I think, last month that we may start going the route of uh. What is it, dilapidated structures through planning and zoning instead of the court system?
Yes, we do.
I think Jared's working.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working with Jared on that and getting the list together, so we're gonna bring it to the planning zoning commission on the houses that we picked this time. And then uh. Myself and Jared, the mayor and Kent are working on uh some other issues that we're addressing, just take some time.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's good segue into code enforcement, thank you, Sal. Uh, you had eight citizen contacts, you did three door hanger notices and those could be for grass, just whatever. Uh, one summons requested, we're gonna be issuing summons now. Uh, but then to send them out on ones we need to take care of and bring here to court. Uh, two dilapidated structures we've talked about, and those are the ones we're, we're working on. And then two reports written, and those will help with the dilapidated structures and so forth and other things that we're doing as far as uh. Another house and then, and issue that we're working on and subdivision.
I, I didn't get those reports, which is why they're not used.
Are you in country?
No. Yep. The citations, warnings, report, that's all that's named.
The mayor had it, but okay.
Yeah. That's all I got.
That's fine. Well, that's it up to you guys.
Um, I had a question about a speed limit sign that's right there by Go Go Storage and it's leaning at a forty five degree angle. Is that something that? We would talk to you about, or is that a city maintenance thing, or does that involve you in a? All encompassing way or?
You only, you only go there and shove it back straight, I can do that. You want the city maintenance stuff, was you.
It's, I look at it all the time and I, I may go over there and just fix it myself, you know? Uh, because now the yield sign is going like this and this other sign's going like that, and so we have part of the charm.
That's why I like T posts.
It's like Google Bill, you know, you just look at the signs, I, they just lean around.
Did we ever, um, get a sign?
They did.
All of our, all our signs are flipped, it's like my.
Um, Laura was asking about the sign, street signs in butterfly petals, and I have not ordered them. Did we order the ones for spells crossing? Yeah.
What? The, the, we talked, the park mobile?
Yeah, park mobile, but not.
Oh, wait, no, no.
No, I'm.
Not the ones, not the stop signs, we've got one stop sign in the shed for boy online.
Was he one?
I'll have to move it out once. Order.
So which signs, it better climb madows or you?
There, there's quite a few, which we're in for.
And then we are gonna mount the no alcohol on the T posts at the parks. Do we have those signs?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I have to, I have to put two T posts down the Facebook. I have to do it the old fashioned way.
Also.
Do you have a T post drawer?
Yeah.
I've got, I've got, I've got that, I'm, I'm working on that.
The ones at phase one, I'll just throw, roll on and on.
That what, that what you gotta do?
I'll have to do two.
I'll help you.
I gotta move the one park mobile sign over and then.
Hard ground.
Rule sign over.
In the back here where the silos are, there's that sign that was bent that had the directional turn. I think it was up at the triangle here, is a text.
That's a text out sign.
Okay.
They told me you can have it if you like it.
And I'll recycle it.
Oh, no, 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 my kid's got Christmas presents, come.
Yeah.
There's a sign to give.
It's just a crooked post. We can hang that one up and play the stop sign.
Oh, my kids will come and just take it, you know, if you don't, you know, tell them.
Okay, so don't leave. Four point two is also something that chief has asked. So. It's a motion uh or discussion to repeal city ordinance chapter one thirty. As per House Bill one eight, one nine, signed by Governor Abbott. Prohibiting municipalities from establishing or enforcing a teen curfew after September first, two thousand twenty three. We can leave it in the ordinances. Or we can remove it for this law.
Can we pull that ordinance up?
Yeah, I got a very strong, but I'll, thank you. But here, here's the, here's the purpose of. So they signed down the law that said no, no city can have a, a teen curfew any longer. So uh, basically this teen curfew, we haven't had an issue here in Marndale. But this, this, this ordinance also gives the chief of police a bunch of things to do and fill it out with courts and uh. Submitting it to, to city council. My knowledge, it's never been done. So uh, that's another reason to repeal it completely from the books. And just get it off there, that way someone's searching, if someone outside is searching, hey, who's got a teen curfew? Why, why have it in our?
I agree.
In our, in our ordinances.
Can we, can we do, do we have to make, look back the motion to do that? Can we, can we do, do we have to make, look back the motion to do that right now?
Yes, yeah, that's why we're bringing it up.
Basically, you're saying we have, we have something that's on the books that the state it said says, you can't do it anymore.
Correct.
Okay. And the attorney is, understands this and.
Right, and, and, and so I did some research, I talked to the attorney.
Was that Catherine?
The, our attorney didn't say he wasn't gonna be here, so I don't know where he is.
So I, I talked, just, I'll, I'll, just, in fairness, to, to our attorney. I spoke to him about this and he said that you just, you can leave it on the books. So I did some additional research, pretty much every city's pulling it off their books, the city of Waco said they're gonna leave it on there, it's Waco, uh. Don't quote me on this, the city up there near Waco said they're gonna leave it on their books, but theirs has an expiration date on it where their. Uh, ordinances fall off because they have expirations on them, so they're just gonna leave it on their books until it falls off and they're not gonna bring it to see.
I agree with you, we should eliminate it.
If it's in conflict with this.
State, we, we don't wanna get in trouble, we already got in trouble in the state before.
I can make a motion.
Go for it, go for it, Jerry.
Uh, I'll make a motion to repeal city ordinance chapter one thirty as per, per House Bill eighteen nineteen. Signed by Governor Abbott prohibiting municipalities from establishing or enforcing a teen curfew after September first, twenty twenty three.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, Karen, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't hear any of your posts of motion, Karen. Okay, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn this lovely meeting at eight fourteen.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, you're big, Jerry, you're getting good at that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Mine, mine is the second.